Come now, the other Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Negracia, Alderman Kotor, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Orion, Alderman Cone, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Negracia, Alderman Kotor, Alderman Rice, Alderman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Cone, Alderman Navarro, seventeen present.
Coram being present, we will be led today in prayer by John Watson Jr. of Maple Temple.
Gracious God, heavenly Father, we bow before you full of praise and adoration as our nation and communities again focus on Black history. We're grateful for our ancestors who struggled, fought, and perished to change the world for us and our children. In those dark days, you were with us. You ushered in the marvelous light just before fate died. As we rehearse the history and remember the impact of the lives and the contributions of Black kings, prince queens, president's slaves, former slaves, teachers, scientists, musicians, singers, engineers, preachers, leaders, family and friends, both past and present. Help all of us realize that Black history has shaped all history. On this day, we recommit ourselves to the pursuit of justice and equality for all, not just for those people we know, but for all people. Amen.
Please join me in a round of applause for John Watson, and thank you for... Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Today, we were celebrating officially kickoff in the chambers Black History Month. Just to give you a little background history, in 1915, Dr. Cartagie Woodson, a noted African-American historian, scholar, educator, and publisher, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. He created this association because there was little inclusion of contributions of Africans and African-Americans in the study of world and American history. African-American Life and History and Dr. Woodson created the Celebration of Black History Month as Negro History Week in 1926. It was created to highlight the history of African-Americans and their contributions to the world and American history. It became a month-long celebration in 1976. The month of February was chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. The association continues to exist to this day and selects a theme for the month of celebration each year. The theme for this year's Black History Month is African-Americans and the Vote. Several of us had an opportunity on Monday to raise the African-American Heritage Flag, which really kicked this week off for us. Raising of that flag creates an opportunity to sense of self-worth and unity in the African-American community, and we should use it as an opportunity to support African-American business throughout our city and throughout our region. Something else has been inspired by the African-American community, which is a song. Give you a little background on this song, Lift Every Voice and Sing. Lift Every Voice and Sing was first written as a poem by James Weldon Johnson and was performed for the first time by five hundred schoolchildren in celebration of President Lincoln's birthday on February the twelfth, nineteen hundred, in Jacksonville, Florida. The song was actually written in 1905. The poem was set in music by Johnson's brother, John Roselman Johnson, and soon adopted by the National Association for the Advancement of Color People as its official song. Today's Lift Every Voice and Sing is one of the most cherished songs of the African-American civil rights movement and is often referred to as the Black National Anthem. On everybody's desk are the lyrics of the song, and we have a very special and honored guest here with us today, Police Officer John Leggett, who's going to lead us in song, and what a phenomenal, well-known individual, well-respected police officer, and well-respected singer in the St. Louis community. Ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome Police Officer John Leggett.
May we all stand? Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring, ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won. Stony the road we trod, bitter the chastening rod, felt in the day when hope unborn had died. Yet with a steady beat have not our weary feet come to the place for which our fathers died. We have come over the way with the tears effin' watered. We have come treading our path through the blood of the slaughtered. Out from the gloomy past till now we stand at last, where the bright gleam of our bright star is cast. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, thou who hast brought us thus far on the way, thou who hast by thy might led us into the light. Keep us forever in thy path, we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places our God where we met thee. Lest our heart drunk with the wind of the world we forget thee. Shadow beneath thy hand, may we forever stand true to our God, true to our native land.
Thank you, thank you, Police Officer Leggett. Some of you may remember his mom, the late Norma Leggett, who was the committee woman for a long time in the fourth ward. Again, thank you, John.
With that, we'll suspend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar. Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. Thank you.
Been moved by the Alderman from the nineteenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-second, and Alderman from the first will take yours up at the end of the this agenda. Alderman from the twenty-third, would you like to approach the dais?
So, I have a camera shy guy in the corner over there, but I don't know if he's coming up. I think he's kind of slow. So, I don't know if you all are familiar with the story of Quentin, but last week you saw on the news where a young lady got hit and killed by a runaway driver. Quentin tried to go out, and actually him and a friend tried to go out to help her out of the street. In the process, he was hit and injured. He's got a broken collarbone and a broken leg and a whole bunch... He's right here behind me. So, I thought, well, you know, here's a guy with a college degree in business management. He can't find a job. And it's really been getting to me because I have friends and people that say, hey, there's plenty of jobs, go get one. I ask anybody in this room, throw your wallet away, throw your identity away, go apply for a job, tell them you don't have a phone or a house. They're not gonna... How do we call you? So, as much as anything, I do want to bring attention to the homeless issue and to the problems that we have. We can't just keep ignoring the homeless people. We can't say, well, they can go get a job because it's just not that simple when you don't have any identity. But here's a guy in with a master's degree, not a master's degree, but a college degree in business management, can't find a job. So, along with Larry Rice, who's over here, they actually got him transportation back to his family in Louisiana. And so, I, you know, it really bothers me that we're not doing what I believe is enough here. I know we talk about the people that are in the workhouse. We talk about different people, yet when we leave out of City Hall, we step over these homeless people and say, well, yeah, I got a house. I don't know. It's really been bothering me, and a lot of people think that I've lost my mind that I'm trying to do more for the homeless people. And believe me, I'm very sincere in wanting to do something. And I could tell you, two years ago, I may not have had that same attitude, but getting to meet some of these people, finding guys that are living in their cars, we're writing vagrance tickets to these guys like crazy, some of them having as many as twenty or thirty tickets for vagrancy. Try to go get a job. Try to find a job with no ID. If they do have any ID, they're gonna run you if you have a bunch of vagrancy tickets. Another guy I know, I talked to, he has a job. He works from three to eleven, so he can't go in the shelter. He has to sleep in his car, and they write him tickets because he doesn't earn enough money to live anywhere else but his car. So, I'm gonna get off my soapbox because I'll be here forever. But I do want to honor Quentin, and Larry Rice, and I'm gonna put Elliot Davis in the mix, although he's camera shy himself, that he's done a lot to bring the attention. So, this is, this resolution is honoring Quentin for his heroism. He doesn't feel he's a hero. There's a young lady, she died. He risked his own life to drag her, along with a friend of his, to drag her out of the street. Unfortunately, he got hit by a hit-and-run driver also. There's two stories I've heard. One is, he was trying to get her out of the street prior to her being hit by a car because she was also homeless and had given up on life. And so, she was basically gonna lay in the street to commit suicide. That's one of the stories I've heard. But, you know, either way, here's a guy who goes out, tries to get somebody. So, in my heart, he's a hero. And I'm presenting him with this resolution. I know it's not in bank. I wish everybody would stand up at least, recognize the heroism in him. Quentin, I know you're camera shy, but if you want to come up and say a couple of words. He's gonna... So, what we're gonna do, I think what we're gonna do is I'm gonna let... Lewis is gonna say something, and I'm gonna have Larry Rice say something. And if Elliot wasn't so camera shy, wherever you're at, I would love to have you just come up here. Yeah, see, he's got a camera. He likes to chase us around with his cameras. He don't like when we do that. Anyway, I'm gonna step aside and get off my soapbox.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. If it's not inappropriate this time, I would ask that the resolution be in bank.
Been moved by Alderman from the twelfth, entertain the second. Second about Alderman from the twenty-seventh and the twenty-sixth. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please create another copy of this resolution and bank. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I just also want to thank Quentin for, you know, the selflessness, to go out in the middle of the street and to get hit to try to save someone else's life. You'd never know who has it in them to step out and put themselves in danger to help someone else. You have shown by your selfless acts that you have that within you, and we're all are gonna be made better because of it. It gives me great honor to see that your story today is being committed to the permanent records of our city. So, one hundred, two hundred years from now, when they research the records of the city of St. Louis, they will see Quentin D. Carter Jr.'s name in there, and they'll be able to read about your story and read about how you put yourself in danger to help someone else. Let's give Quentin a big round of applause, and thank you.
I was shocked when our first responders told us that after Quentin got hit, went to the hospital, he's in critical condition, he's released to the streets. We've been working with him every day as he sleeps outside. We got him a bus ticket. He's not able to leave tomorrow morning because he has to go back in for surgery Tuesday, and my prayer is that we can find him a hotel room because after he comes out of surgery, I don't want to see him back out there, and also that we can get fourteen-eleven locust open again soon during the day so he wouldn't have to be out there and others like him. Again, thank you for doing this today. It's meant the world to Quentin and the homeless people. God bless you.
No, I'm gonna get off my soapbox and wrap it up. I don't... Oh, Quentin's gonna come up. I'm gonna hand this to him. He's getting ready to walk off. But anyway, God bless you all. Thank you for putting up with me and my brief soapbox minute. And Quentin, this is for you. Anyway, God bless.
Everyone here knows that I'm allergic to cats, so Alderman Vacaro just reminded me that that was a little bit better than when he brought a cat here, and I had an allergic reaction and had to go, had to go straight to the hospital. He almost killed me that day. Alderman from the nineteenth, did you have?
Mr. President, may I ask for a point of privilege before we move on?
Please, please proceed.
As we know, today is Wear Red in honor of women, most especially with heart disease and problems. And because I do recognize that the majority of our members here have red on, it would be good for us to take a picture together and have that posted to show support. And most people don't know that women are the leading ones with heart attacks because you know what you all do to us, okay? So, I was just gonna ask for that privilege.
Can we do the... You would like us to do the photo before we leave the courtesy resolution?
Because everyone is here, and I do know we have different schedules. Yes.
Yes. I will honor that because we're still within the courtesy resolutions calendar. If anyone wants to come up, take a photo with the red on today. I know that, I know that certainly the deltas will be appreciated because Delta Day's coming around.
Yeah, Delta Day will be soon.
Yeah. If you make your way to the dais. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. With that, we're back to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests? Any inter... Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President and the board. I'd like to welcome our honored guest, Mr. John Stifler with the St. Louis Labor Council.
Any further introductions? Alderman from the twenty-second.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have my special guest, the Plums and Pipe Bitters, local five sixty-two that's in the balcony.
Welcome. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Besides Wear Red Day, according to Wikipedia, this is also Go to Work Naked Day. So, I guess you'd still be red if you did that. But also on this day, in 1966, the Alderman from the twenty-third, it's a day of sorrow for him. His favorite actor's show is taken off the air as Mr. Red the Talking Horse was canceled. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from... Approval of the Minutes.
Approval of the Minutes, January the thirty-first, 2020.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on Approval of the Minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for Approval of the Minutes dated January the thirty-first, 2020.
Move about Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear President Reed and members of the board, I return to you, here with my disapproval, Board Bill 178. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
At the request of Alderman from the seventeenth, please place that aforementioned bill on the inform account.
So noted.
We've dispensed with line items seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our inform accounters? Would anyone like taking bills off of any of our inform accounters? We've dispensed with line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 208, sponsored by Alderman Orion and the following Alderman persons: Green Negracia Martin, Rice Tyus Spencer, Navarro Pam Boyd, Clark Hubbard Middlebrook Vacoro and Ornowitz, and ordinance amended sections ten, twelve, twenty-five, and twenty-seven of ordinance number six eight, six five seven, and codified in the city code and revised code as Title XI, Chapter thirty-four, Section zero nine zero, one one zero, two four zero, and two five zero, concerning the Commission of Health Authority Asbestos Performance Base Fee Schedules Related to Asbestos and Demolition Air Pollution and Penalties and Containing Asseverability and Effective Date Clause. Board Bill 209, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-two, fifty-eight, fifty-two, fifty... I'm sorry, fifty-two sixty-eight Maple Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill 210, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty-first, 2020, for the Jefferson Gamble Elliott Mills area. Board Bill 211, sponsored by Alderman Todd, and ordinance authorizing and directing the directive streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the forty-four hundred block of West Bell Place by blocking said traffic flow at the east curb line of North Taylor Avenue at the intersection of forty-four hundred block of West Bell Place and North Taylor Avenue. Board Bill 211, sponsored by Alderman Martin, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the third, 2020, to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map in city block three two zero nine from B, two-family dwelling district to E, multiple-family dwelling district at eighty-two zero one and eighty-two twenty-one Minnesota Avenue, as so as to include the described parcels of land in city block thirty-two zero nine and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 213, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty-first, 2020, for the forty-one zero one North Grand Boulevard area. Board Bill 214, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the third, 2020, to change the zoning of property as indicated on Forest Park Southeast Form Based District Map from NG two Neighborhood General Type Two Zone to the NC two Neighborhood Center Type Two Zone in the city block three nine eight one forty-four seventy-eight and forty-four eighty-four Vista Avenue containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 215, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Negracia, and ordinance approving the Soccer Stadium Redevelopment Plan, making certain findings related thereto, including that the redevelopment area described therein is a blighted area, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute certain documents relating thereto, including a master redevelopment agreement and authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents or as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof. Board Bill 216, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Negracia, and ordinance approving a Soccer Stadium Redevelopment Plan in accordance with section nine nine point three zero zero to nine nine point seven one five of the revised statutes of Missouri, making certain findings related thereto, including that the redevelopment area described therein is a blighted area, and pledging the cooperation of the Board of Alderman. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 208, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 209 and 210, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 211, and to the HUD's Committee, Board Bill 212, 213, 214, 215, and 216. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee with the due pass recommendation, Board Bill 190- feet east of Kings Highway Memorial Boulevard, east curb line, and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of public employees with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 200, sponsored by Alderman Howard and Alderman Murphy. An ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the city of St. Louis and all employees under the classified service, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves of absence, and authorization of deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance 70791 allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 199, sponsored by Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Rice, Alderman Green, and Alderman Navarro. An ordinance pertaining to the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act of 1996, PK 104 through 91, as amended. Amending ordinance 68109 by repealing paragraph A of Section 3 and enacting a new paragraph A, therefore specifically by adding redesignating the city's hybrid entity healthcare components to add the Department of Health of the city of St. Louis as such. That is the extent of second reading.
We will dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 92 as, I'm sorry, 192 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Volmer. An ordinance authorizing the amendment to ground lease between the city of St. Louis and Lucas Hunt Associates, LP of Missouri Limited Partnership for Property and Improvements commonly known as the Hampton Garden Apartments, located at 5927 Susan Place, St. Louis, Missouri 63139.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection?
We have none.
We'll dispense with line items 17 through 19, first reading of resolutions.
Resolution 218, sponsored by Alderman Morton, The Gold Machine LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the 11th? Alderman from the, Madam Clerk, please move to the next.
Resolution 219, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, WTF Realty LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the 2nd, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 219?
I'd like to make a motion to introduce resolution 219.
It's introduced. Would you like to move it to committee, or you want to pass it today?
Yes, I would like to move it to.
Just make a motion to send it to committee.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to send it to committee, to HUDs.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman, moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, that we send resolution 219 to HUDs. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution 219 to HUDs.
So noted.
Resolution, let's go back to resolution 218.
Resolution 218, sponsored by Alderman Morton, The Gold Machine LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the 11th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 218?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request that resolution number 218 be sent to the HUDs Committee.
It's been moved by the 11th, seconded by Alderman from the 12th and the 9th, that we send resolution 218 to HUDs. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution 218 to HUDs.
So noted.
Resolution, let's go back to resolution 218.
Resolution 218, sponsored by Alderman Morton, The Gold Machine LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the 11th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 218?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request that resolution number 218 be sent to the HUDs Committee.
It's been moved by the 11th, seconded by Alderman from the 12th and the 9th, that we send resolution 218 to HUDs. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution 218 to HUDs.
So noted. Resolution 221, sponsored by Alderman Rice and Alderman Green, South Grand Community Improvement District Board of Directors' appointments.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 221?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to pass resolution 221 to appoint the South Grand Community Improvement District Board of Directors.
Been moved by Alderman from the 8th, seconded by Alderman from the 6th. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Mistillaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, February 12th, HUDs Committee will have a meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Rules Committee will meet 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. And Friday, February 14th, is the full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you. Just wanted to announce that this year, like many, many years in the past, in the 24th Ward, we'll be doing the St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 17th. I would encourage anyone who wants to come down, have a good time, to take the 17th off. And, you know, since it is St. Patrick's Day, you might want to take the 18th off, too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further, Alderman from the 12th?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have a committee hearing Thursday to 13th for Health and Human Services, please, at 10 o'clock.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 23rd?
I need to be excused. I'll be on jury duty starting Monday. I feel sorry for that, whoever. So, if you don't see me around Monday and Tuesday, I'm on jury duty.
All right. Any further, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the following Alderman and Alderwomen from the 4th to 17th and the 25th.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 22nd, would you like to also add the 7th? Make another motion on the Alderman from the 7th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the Alderman from the 7th Ward.
Been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Late. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn this body until next Friday, February 14th, 2020, Valentine's Day.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, stand adjourned.